All right, good evening, everyone. Could we all stand up for the place to play?
Good evening. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our town hall meeting. This meeting is now called to order, and if you all don't mind, as we begin, I'd like us all just to take a few moments of silence in your own special way, just to reflect. I know we've had some recent activities that were a bit devastating on us all, and just take a few moments of silence now. Thank you. And at this time, I ask that the council would review the agenda, and if there are no edits, additions, takeaways, if all is in favor of this agenda going forward, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved, and I believe we have one speaker, public comments, and that's Ms. Vicki. You can step to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Vicki Kautz, and I live at 5101 Crittenden Street. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm here today because I'm very concerned about, some things have been going on in our neighborhood. Recently, my children, who are the ages of 11 and 9, were assaulted and robbed at the Crittenden Street playground. This happened on August 28th, and it happened by two juveniles that live in our neighborhood, and the one juvenile lives in Riverdale. And these juveniles are still walking the streets, and I know by law they have every right to walk the streets, but they're intimidating others in the neighborhood as well. I've talked to other neighbors that have, were involved that night. It took a neighbor, it took a neighborhood and Edmiston Police and Hyattsville Police and PG County Police to get these three boys. We caught them that evening, and I want to thank Edmiston Police, they did an awesome job. Officer Young, I believe is his name, and Officer Adams, they were fantastic and they helped. But these juveniles are still walking around, and one of my neighbors said that they were waiting at their son's bus stop, and I'm just very concerned because my, my children are afraid to leave my yard, and that shouldn't be. You know, this is my neighborhood, I've been here since 2004. My kids, obviously, my son's 11, my daughter's 9, so they both were born and been raised here. And I, not only am I a resident in PG County, I'm a teacher of PG County, and it just upsets me that these boys are just walking around and they're just intimidating others. I can't say very much, but there are proceedings that are going to be happening against these gentlemen, not even gentlemen, these boys. But that's my concern, is that, I'm just concerned of the welfare and the safety of our citizens. I also have men that are coming from over in the ice cream area at the Berliner, coming and urinating behind my home. I, back a few months ago, I actually signed a statement, and they were talking about pressing charges against the gentleman. Just a few weeks ago, he came and he urinated behind my home again. I actually yelled at him, and I told him to get out. He told me it was none of my business, but he was urinating in front of me and my children again. And there's also been three men, who, Hispanic men, who've been walking around the neighborhood, and they're obviously intoxicated. So it's a concern. We have lots of children in our neighborhood, and I'm frustrated as a citizen, and I'm scared, to be honest with you. Like, I leave my porch light on at night, I never used to do that, because I'm, you know, afraid of what's going to happen. Neighbors down the street were telling me today they heard gunshots the other night, and I'm just, I'm very concerned about everything that's going on. Now, I know when we first moved here in 2004, we did have some crime, we had people breaking into homes, we had people breaking into cars, and then there was a murder behind my house in the industrial park in the whites, the white, where the white buildings are. But that was a long time ago, and we haven't had anything for a while, and now I feel like all of a sudden, all of these things are happening, and maybe it's, I'm taking it personally because my children were victims, but they're 11 and 9, like, they can't even, they don't even want to go to the park anymore, and, and I don't even feel safe. Like, I actually was actually on my stoop, sitting on my porch, watching my children that night, and they walked out of my view, and I called my son right away, and I said, "Are you guys okay?", and he said, "Yes", and no sooner did he hang up that phone with me, they were jumped and attacked. My 9-year-old was punched in the chest, she's 9, and she's a girl, and this boy did this to her. And I, it just shouldn't be that way, I'm just really concerned about that. And I've brought this, and this is another issue that I'm concerned about, and I've brought this up to every mayor that we've had since 2004, about the speeding that goes on, on 51st Avenue and at my, in my corner, and I've asked for speed bumps, and I never get anywhere with the speed bumps. And then when Mr. Ortiz was mayor, they redid the street in hopes that it would slow down the traffic flow, because they made it one way, and they put the light in, it's not working. People are still going down the street, and it says "one way", they're going down the street, they're flying through the stop signs. Then they're getting angry, they'll, they, they don't know which way to turn, so they'll turn down 51st towards the park, and then they get mad because, "Oh, it's a dead end", so then they have to turn around, and then they fly back up. And we've got kids everywhere, and I'm just, I'm very concerned, and, and something just needs to be done about it. So that's why I'm, I'm here tonight. I actually wanted to come before, but my schedule's very crazy with teaching and raising two kids on my own, so I'm just here tonight to just address my concerns, and I know there's other neighbors in the neighborhood that feel the same way, so that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
You said, um, one of the boys is from, from the neighborhood?
Oh, yes, two of them are from the neighborhood.
And one came over from Riverdale?
And one comes, he hangs out with them, yes.
Is, is it, um, like, one of the kids be riding a bike around all the time?
No.
That's not him?
I've never seen them on bikes, I've only seen them on foot.
And you mentioned to me that the ones that live in Edmiston live on your street?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, so that's...
I know exactly where they live. They only live a couple houses down from me.
You wouldn't think they'd be that stupid.
I know, I've not been there.
Couple doors away.
Well, the thing was, that night that they did that, the night that they did that, they assaulted my children, they took off running, and then they came back, they walked right by my house, and that's how we all, the whole neighborhood was chasing them. My ex-husband was chasing them, the neighbors down the street were chasing them, and then we called, we called Officer Young, and they were on it, because they were out patrolling and looking for them, and that's how we caught them, because they came back. So they're children, too, themselves, they're not...
How old are they?
I'm guessing they're probably about 14, 15, 16, somewhere in that, that range. But, like, we were even out for a walk, um, two Fridays ago, and we're walking down Decatur Street, and I'm holding my daughter's hand, and she actually has anxiety issues anyways, and we turned around, and one of them was walking behind us. Now, he wasn't doing anything, but I'm sure he was just going to wherever he was going, but like, instantly, her hand started sweating, she, you know, grabbed me, and she, I said, "You're okay, we're going to walk this way, he's going to walk that way", and as soon as we got to her house, she just started crying, and I, it's just, it's, for me, as a mom, it's, it's too much, and I'm just very concerned about what's going on.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and I'm sorry that that occurred, that hurts, especially when it's dealing with your children, definitely, and I'm glad that our police are on it, and it seems like if we know where they live, and I, I don't know if, if our officers know where...
These will use children, have been stopped numerous times by us, and they have quite a bit of paperwork on them, so when they finally do go to trial, hopefully with all this other additional stuff, maybe the court systems will do something appropriate. The Verliner thing, we did address it once, and the guy seemed to stop for a while, I will address that tomorrow. I will try to get the officers over there as much as we can to do more traffic patrol.
I don't know why I always think some kind of conversation with the kids helps, I don't know.
These three don't help. As far as the drunk males, we know where they live, we, we stop them frequently, it's just a matter of time before, maybe we can get something that we can actually charge them with that will make them adapt their ways to better ways of being, um, you say, we'll try to increase traffic control and patrol more in that area as, as time and staffing allows.
Do they, they still come out to the playground?
They do go to the playground, however, they go around, they don't come down in front of my home, but they go out to Decatur Street, and people, the neighbors have seen them, and my children have seen them when they're driving on Decatur, they're still down the playground hanging out, but...
I mean, one, you know, I'm, I'm never a fan of, because, because as you said, like, they're youth too, right? Like, it's, it's a very fraught situation, and they're neighbors of yours, but I wonder, at least with respect to the park, that, you know, I don't know if it's worth maybe trying to get a stay away order, if, if there's proceedings pending with them in the juvenile court, to at least, you know, I don't know if you could go back potentially...
The one, the one is on probation, and if he comes near me, I have a phone number to call. Uh, the other two, I just, to be honest, I just haven't got down to, I went up to the juvenile court to get, because I went over to Hyattsville Courthouse, they told me I had to go down up to Marlborough, since I'm a juvenile, so I just haven't had a chance to go down there.
And did the state's attorney's office give you some materials around counseling as well for your kids, since they're crime victims?
Yes, my daughter's in counseling anyways, so...
Okay.
When you talk to the state's attorney, did they happen to say anything as far as these kids harassing you all, you know, harassing state's witnesses or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
They just pretty much sent me paperwork, I did talk to their case, because he's called Case Worker Manager, I spoke with him, and he said, "If I see anything, to call them", and through the grapevine of kids knowing kids, they've posted things on social media, and I actually told the case manager what I seen, and I actually have a picture of something, so, and I told one of your officers about the other night.
If they actually make any threats to you, or any way, shape, or form, call us, and if nothing else, we can start putting paper on it too, and we'll forward it to the state's attorney as well.
Okay.
Because I'm sure they're pretty much like a 9 to 5 or 8 to 4, and these kids aren't probably going to be doing it during that time.
Yeah.
And we'll start putting paper on and forwarding it up to juvenile services and try to hit it from all angles.
Okay.
I do know, Vicki, that the farm has had some problems.
Yes, I think it's them.
And they put, you know, an additional gate up, and they've talked to the captain, they've talked to me about their issues, and they believed it was from neighborhood children that was coming into the farm. You know, they've never had a problem, but they've had some issues there too, so it may be same, maybe the same children.
Because I know on social media, one in particular that I've seen, there, one of the boys was down at the park, and it was at night, and it shows him smoking a substance or something, so, and they, and they brag about it.
Yeah, it's tough, so you can't really approach them, because you never know what you're dealing with.
Exactly.
Yeah, and then on the other, with the speed hump, when we did the charrettes here, there was heavy discussion about, you know, the speeding down 51st and Crittenden, and I didn't mention it, because you, you mentioned it to me, and there is heavy concern, but we, I mean, we came up with quite a few things, one way, and then going back to, well, changing it one way all the way down, and putting a speed hump, another, putting a speed hump right there, and then waiting for the sidewalk to come in, and I don't think we really came up with what to do.
I think you all actually talked about making the one way all the way...
All the way down.
Going to Crittenden.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, going to Buchanan.
Going to Buchanan.
Right.
Because I was at one of those things where they talked about...
Uh-huh.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's what...
That's the final...
There was some discussion with the chief about that, and I believe the issue was maybe signage and how, how the businesses on Buchanan got access, because some...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It became a traffic issue.
Right.
Yeah.
There's, back behind the one building, there's another row of businesses, you have to come down.
They, they would have to come in.
Right, well, they'd have to go clear around and back in, so I think that's what slowed it down. I don't, I don't know, but we can certainly study it again.
If that would remedy, remedy the problem or not.
That street's, one of the streets, WSSC, is going to completely redo next summer with the water main replacement, so we certainly could look at adding speed bumps as part of that project, so that it didn't necessarily cost us, from that standpoint, but, or we could look at one like we have on Crittenden further down. That was a used one we purchased. I know you, you're not excited with that one, but I think the residents down there...
Like a real one.
Actually do like that one.
An actual one that could slow it down.
Have you ever seen the parents of these children?
I have not.
They're raising themselves pretty...
I just know where they, I know where they live, but I don't know their parents.
But one like that...
Have they been living there as long as you have, or not sure?
I just chose the boys this summer. They were always walking up and down the street, and they usually wear the same clothes, so they were pretty, stand out, they should, I don't think.
Captain, is there any kind of sign, because I've seen the cars do what Vicki described when they turn and go down to the dead end, and then are mad, because they can't go on through. Is there, do we have a sign there that...
There is a sign.
That says you can't, it's not a through street? Okay. I was just trying to think of some way there.
Have there been an increased presence of the police in that area recently?
Yes.
Okay.
I just saw Officer Young go through there.
Yeah, because I remember when you first mentioned to me, he said he was going to increase patrolling over there, so they are still...
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
I'll get a price for, I'll get a price from the concrete company that's doing the project at Tanglewood, see what they would cost to put in a speed bump.
That street needs to be redone before you can even put a bump in there, with all the...
Right.
And move it up.
Thank you, and again, I'm, I'm sorry that's happening. It's like a form of bullying and...
Harassment.
Terror, harassment.
They're supposed to wear the same clothes, you think it could be gang related?
They like that for a long time.
She had fingers, I don't know what they all mean, but, yeah.
Okay, because that's one way we could probably target it, because they don't know they're cracking down on gangs.
Because I know, I know, my cousin works for ICE, he's an ICE agent, and he said that with the Trump administration, they're really focusing on the gangs right now, so that's something we could go that route.
Yeah, that could be, you could, yeah, that could be more effective, probably.
The next item on the agenda, we're going to swear in one of our new police officers. We've added one more police officer to our fleet, Mr. Dedrick Baxter. Good evening, Mr. Baxter.
Good morning, ma'am, how are you?
Good. Come on up front.
Can you stand in front of him?
Yes. Tapping? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Dedrick Baxter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm that I...
And affirm that I...
Will support and defend...
Will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And that I...
And that I...
Will bear true faith...
Will bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the State of Maryland.
To the State of Maryland.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And that I...
And that I...
Will support the Charter.
Will support the Charter.
And ordinances...
And ordinances.
Rules...
Rules.
And regulations...
And regulations.
Of the Town of Edmiston.
Of the Town of Edmiston.
And I will perform...
And I will perform.
My duties in accordance with...
My duties in accordance with...
The tenants...
The tenants.
Of the law enforcement code...
Of the law enforcement code.
Of ethics...
Of ethics.
And I will...
And I will.
To the best of my skill...
To the best of my skill.
And judgment...
And judgment.
Diligently...
Diligently.
Faithfully...
Faithfully.
And without prejudice...
And without prejudice.
Execute the office...
Execute the office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
For the Town of Edmiston.
For the Town of Edmiston.
How's that baby, Officer Baxter? Oh, God.
Hello, Officer Young.
Thanks for being here. Is Officer Young taking care of you, Officer Baxter?
He is, ma'am.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the town council minutes from the work session meeting held September the 5th, 2017, and at this time, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes. September the 5th, is there a second?
No, second.
There's no discussion, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right. The next item is the consideration of the town council minutes from regular council meeting on September 13th. Is there a motion to accept the council meeting minutes?
I so move.
Thank you, is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right. Next item is the consideration of the town council minutes from closed session meeting on September the 13th. I'll entertain a motion to accept the closed session meeting minutes.
I make a motion to accept the closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Bee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is the consideration to move $100,000 from the town's operating fund to the town's investment account, which is the reserve fund. The current balance of the investment account is $415,117.66. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to move $100,000 to our investment account.
I move.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Johnson, how do you vote? All right. We're moving that money.
Your Honor, I did check with our auditors to get a sense of how much needs to be in the reserve fund, and he said the standard rule of thumb is typically three months of revenues, so our revenues are 1.6 million, so a third of that would be approximately where we are, so...
Where we are.
So we're getting very, very close to that, so that's a good, a good news situation.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much, Mr. Barnes, for keeping us on track and moving us up.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
How much was in the reserve fund before Mr. Barnes came on board?
62...
7,000, I think.
Oh, 7?
7,000.
62. Oh, 67, yeah.
67.
Yeah, but he said 7,000, I was like, what, 7, no. 67. So we moved from 67,000, that was four years ago?
Three. I just had my anniversary.
Oh, you started a year after me.
You all were elected, I think, in April, and I started in October.
2014.
2014, correct.
So when...
So three years.
So in that time, you've been able to grow it by like...
Yeah, they...
Fourfold.
We've done it...
And get us to where we need to be, that's great.
We've done it through, you know, budget being conservative, having lag from salary hires, good revenue flow. We collected one of the largest bills, we worked hard to get that collected, so... From a former business, yeah.
Okay. That's great.
It took a...
Took some doing.
Took some doing to get that money. Yeah. Some negotiation at that table. All right, so... The next item is the consideration of application for community development block grant to fund a portion of the summer environmental camp in the amount of $7,864 for four weeks, or $11,585 for a period of six weeks.
Your Honor, this is the program we used for funding this year, oh, I'm sorry.
And that grant application deadline is October the 12th, 2017. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll go to discussion.
I move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? There's no second. So we're not going to apply for the grant?
So for the council members that are seconding, this means that you, you do, you do not wish for us to have a...
Summer...
A summer camp next year for the residents?
I think we need to further discuss it.
The deadline to apply for the grant is October the 12th, which is tomorrow. So as discussed in the work session, where we all agreed that we would apply for the grant and discuss it, because we have... grant and discuss it because we have a good, what? How long do we have between?
May, it'll be, May's the award.
Right. We all agreed in the work session that we would discuss it, discuss it after we apply for it because we have a short deadline. So we're willing to risk not having the environmental camp?
I did talk to our program manager with CDBG today. She did encourage to actually up the grant, and she actually indicated that the $9,600 that's included for the four counselors for the whole period would be covered under the grant, so the $11,585 was what she recommended as applying for. I don't know if that helps.
Okay, well, motion will die, and we will lose our opportunity to apply for this grant. If there is no second, then we will not have a camp for free for our children this summer, where we could have had a six-week or a four-week camp for our children. All right. Motion dies. For lack of a second. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of application for a community development block grant to provide a streetscape for Credite and Street in the amount of $171,200. The grant application deadline is October the 12th, 2017, in which we discussed this as well last week in our work session. Do I have a motion?
Ms. Mayor, I'm sorry. Can we revert back to the previous question?
Let me finish this one, and then we can go back. We can go back. Let me finish this one. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bee. Is there a second?
No second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Ms. Duberville?
We just had a resident come here this evening to express to us concerns about 14, 15, and 16-year-olds who are engaged in some really disconcerting conduct here in the town, where they are actually assaulting a nine and 11-year-old. And I would suggest that, and as educators, I think that this is probably clear to some people around here, but, you know, and this occurred in the summertime, am I right?
Well, this is August 28th.
Okay. That it is participation in camps like the ones that we ran this summer that helped prevent kids from getting to a point of boredom, or getting caught up in things that they shouldn't be caught up in, if there's concerns about this being gang activity. And it boggles my mind that we would forego grant money, free money, to the town. Free money to the town, so that our children, so that 20 of our residents would be able, kids ages seven to 11, would be able to go to camp during the summertime.
What has to do with 14 and 15?
What I'm suggesting is that if you are between the ages of seven to 11, and maybe you participate in something positive like that, it can have an impact on your life so you don't end up roaming the streets at whatever time of night and assaulting children in a playground.
And where parents don't have to come out of their pocket to provide, whereas park and planning, you do have to provide finances for specialty camps. And most of the times, they last two weeks, and it can be from $200 plus, and then you have to provide aftercare. And this is something that we're able to do with a grant. And some of the things that occurred this year, we've tweaked it because it was our first year, and some things we are not going to repeat, and we're making it better. And this is, this was one, we were one of the first towns to do something like this, and they're willing to do it again, and they're providing more money for us, and they were happy that we're doing it again, and we're willing to let this go. And Mr. Barnes and Ms. Shantay are the ones that are writing this grant. They're the ones taking the time to do this, and all we have to do is say yes.
Yeah, but Madam Mayor, we weren't paid, so far we haven't received funds for the last grant, and if you recall, the last, the last camp cost the taxpayers of Edmiston close to $40,000. We've discussed this.
We've just moved.
And that is the reason why we have got objection to this.
We just.
It's not a matter that the grant covered all of the expenses.
We just moved 400.
Yes, 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 but still, those are being spent.
$415,000.
And very, very few residents from Edmiston were able to be a part of the program. We had everybody from all surrounding towns.
That's a false statement. Eighteen of the 30 kids were from Edmiston.
Not that they weren't able.
Wasn't, wasn't from Edmiston.
But it's not that they weren't able, it's that they didn't apply. It's not that they weren't able.
My concern is, if we, if we knew that the deadline was, is going to be tomorrow, why didn't we discuss this? We, we've met, we didn't meet in August, but we met in September. We could have discussed this in September.
Mr. Barnes didn't know that it, we, we weren't, we didn't have knowledge. We provided, we all found out at the same time.
We don't want to repeat the same. I don't feel comfortable.
But we all found out the same time.
I understand that, but it's, last year, I went back, I went back, last year, we did the same thing. We reapproved this in October last year, so we should have learned from last year. This is coming up, and we can start discussing, having a vigorous debate about this. We were very upset. Several council members came to Mr. Barnes and expressed concern about the mismanagement of funds, and that's why. So I don't want to be lectured as to why, as an educator. I'm not, I'm not going, I'm going to turn down money because if, if this was the total fee, if this was the total, the, the final price that we're going to pay, and it wasn't going to cost the taxpayers of Edmiston anything, I would be the first one on board. But we've got to learn from our mistakes, and I don't see us learning so far.
Well, who's going to punish, but who's going to get punished for that, right? Like.
There are other grants out there that we can, we can research. Summer camp doesn't start until the next year, so we have got the time to research.
But as we discussed at the work session last week at length, because you raised this concern about there not being sufficient time to review this, that we would go ahead and apply for it, and we would agree, and we, we agreed at that time.
Well, after further, after further, I went home, contemplated, I decided that I will wait, and I think we should, I think we should research other options, other grants that pay in advance rather than pay at the end.
Who's going to research that?
Well, just so our residents know, we do have the option of being able to apply for this grant, and then we would have another motion if we are actually awarded the grant on whether or not to accept it. And so by foregoing any discussion, what's, without, without having, A, we're not even, we don't even have a motion to consider here, but B, even if we did and it didn't pass, we're foregoing that opportunity to be able to have the time, to be able to talk about how we could make sure that whatever concerns that you had the last round don't come up again. So this is totally foreclosing that, and it feels like it is punishing the, the kids of our community for, for, for concerns that you had about what happened the last time around.
Well, I beg to differ, because I see differently. I think we have the time to do, to not, not rush again. Last time we rushed, and it ended up costing us almost $40,000, and we still haven't gotten the grant money back. In, in fact, what upsets me is that at one point, I was told we had the money, then I was told we didn't have the money, then I was told we didn't have the money, and then when I asked at the work session, I was told, well, we have a year to submit to get the money. I cannot go forward as a, as an elected official, because I'm responsible for all of the residents who elected me to spend their money wisely, and I cannot in good conscience do that.
Well, again, we're not talking about accepting the award, we're talking about applying.
Well, that's my, I've expressed myself.
And I think we have time, do we not have time to explore options, other options for other grants? And, and it doesn't necessarily have to be an environmental camp, it can be another type of camp. I think I expressed that at the work session, a camp that has an academic background. I expressed that also. I think we have time to.
I think you're right, Salita, except for, we researched for this camp this year, every grant that was out there available for camp, operating camps, and we were not successful. We submitted three. And so foundations and others, they don't give money upfront. I verified that with our auditors today. Grants don't work that way for the communities. That's why they ask you if you have the funds on hand to pay and then get reimbursed. And so, you know, again, if I made a mistake, don't, don't punish others, because if you want the budget to be $11,585, if that's what the grant comes in is, and that's what you want the budget for the camp to be, then that's what the budget is, and that's what the camp costs. But you have from now till May to make that decision, and you may not even get it awarded. But when a grant funder tells you that, wow, we love this grant, it's a great program, and we want to up the increase, you don't get that opportunity very often. They don't share that with you. And so I really think that we're cutting off our nose despite our face by not at least applying for it. And as Mayor Gant indicated, you've, you've laid out the groundwork, you've closed the door, you've laid out how it has to be done in the future, and there's no problem with that. So if the budget is this, and you don't want to budget another dollar from the, the town in next year's budget, then that's exactly what you do. You have that time to have that whole conversation between now and when we start budget prep in February, and then clear through till May. But there aren't a lot of grant opportunities for this particular purpose in, and if you recall, Kim researched, that was her job, I mean, grant writing, and so that's what she researched. She applied to the K-Fritz Foundation, she applied to various other locations, and wasn't successful.
And you can stand firm on your decision, but please don't do it based on a personal, please just remember, it's about, the, the camp was about the children, and about the parents, and remember the effect that it had on the children and our residents. And I, I mentioned last week that there was no mismanagement of funds, and we have to be careful of the words that are said about our town administrator.
And our council members.
And our council members. But there was no mismanagement of funds. So the camp was a very good camp, it was an effective camp, and we were given the opportunity again, and I really would hate to forego this camp, and then next year not have it offered to us again by the county so easily or so readily. But as a council, you do have the right and the ability to allow a vote to die, a motion to die.
I would have nothing to do with.
Well, in light of that, I would move again that we apply. This isn't about accepting an award if we're offered one, but to apply.
So there's a motion on the floor, again, to apply for the CDBG grant for the environmental camp, just to apply, because the deadline is tomorrow, and it's just to apply. And then do further research. Is there a second? Motion dies. All right. The next item is the consideration of the grant application to the Maryland Energy Administration for the Maryland Smart Energy Communities grant in the amount of, in the amount to purchase a Segway police electric vehicle. The grant deadline is November the 10th. Captain, would you like to elaborate?
Well, I know we have been looking at one for a while, and after talking with Mr. Barnes, we found this grant application, the same one, I believe, we used for the leaf and the code enforcement, I mean, the public works truck. It's a great way for community policing at the events. I plan on, when we have two people on shift, having someone riding it around, being more visible in that, and more approachable than in the car. And also, it's a good way to work the bike paths and the playgrounds. This is a three-wheel vehicle, not a two-wheel, and it has emergency equipment, so we'll be noticed, but it is not a response or a pursuit vehicle in any way, shape, or form. But Cottage City has a, a version of one, and they seem to get a lot of good response from it, and I think it'd be really great for community policing, and if we can get the grant to cover most of it, that's sort of a win-win, plus it's a, a green thing, and it'll help us in that way also.
Thank you. Is there a motion to apply for this grant for a Segway?
Clarification, Ms. Mayor. I'm sorry, the, the amount is missing here about how much the vehicle costs versus.
It's 70% of the total cost. It's 12, it's $13,312, the grant amount is, is 70% of that amount.
I think we had, last week, it was.
Okay. So the cost to the town will be?
The difference, which is $3,000.
What is it, 3,000?
It's actually 2,994.
Stack's right.
Well, I'll just say, the consideration of a grant application. Is there a motion? To apply for the grant.
For the consideration to apply.
And the amount.
The Maryland Energy Administration Smart Energy for them to segue police vehicle.
To purchase a Segway, yes. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Captain?
Over on the table, there's reports for the crimes, as well as citations issued. I've gone back as far as May through September. It's a little bit different format, so bear with me, there's a few changes. I'll be adding and subtracting on that. As far as September, we had 10 disorderly subjects, that's one of the big ones, as well as six assist other units, and four loud music. Had three theft from autos, three regular traffic accidents, two hit-and-run accidents, two accidents with injuries, and five vandalisms. State citations, we wrote five for stop signs, one for registration, four for driver's license violations, two for all others. Warnings, we wrote two for stop signs. Warnings, we wrote two for stop sign, one for seatbelt, two for registration, and eight for all others, one safety repair order, and nine parking tickets. Code enforcement was extremely busy. She did the Fountain Park Apartments, which was a hundred and twenty inspections in itself. She'd issued four building permits, five building licenses were issued, citizens' contacts and complaints, eight, five warnings, four home inspections, one municipal citation was issued, four rental licenses, two stop work orders, eight unregistered or untagged vehicles, and six verbal warnings. She has eleven compliances. She hopes to have a larger number next month. She starts back November second for the rein inspections in Fountain Park, and she, she had quite a few violations there. It took a lot of her time. That's all I have for-
The, um, rein inspection, so she's going back over everything she went through already?
She's going back to the ones that were, they're violated, or violations on it.
To see the, see if the work was done.
Yep. Now, of course, it's a large area, and hopefully she's, they, they are prioritizing the ones that they're working on, and she'll be going back and checking. We realize thirty days is not always enough time to do a hundred and twenty different days.
Right, 'cause I know some, some units haven't been checked, and I know that for a fact.
Well, we-
And also, on, um, on this police report, the, um, two missing people-
Mm-hmm.
Were they found?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And, um, suicide, um, what was up with that? Suicide attempt, yeah?
Um, that would be classified as anything, basically, they say, you know, I wanna hurt myself. It would, that would be listed as a suicide attempt. It would be committed to the hospital for evaluation.
It, was it like the same person four times, or?
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Oh, okay. Funny, Coach, I didn't hear nothing about that. Didn't miss, so didn't something happen over the weekend in the town?
There was a cutting Sunday night. I believe it was the problem house we had back down over the neighborhood.
The ones where they were always drinking it?
Yeah. Apprehensions were made.
Was it a cutting or stabbing?
It was a cutting, it looked like it was a broken bottle.
Oh.
Oh, they went from cans to bottles.
It was non-life threatening, um, the apprehension was made, and it was turned over to the county for investigation and prosecution.
Can we have an update on how many blighted properties we have in Edmiston?
I would have to look into that, and I can email you all.
Okay. Um, the, um, if you could look into also an update on the house that's on Hamilton Street across from me, but like, across the stop sign.
The red one.
It's supposed to be getting demolished at some point in time. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the red one that's been there, and the gentleman to the right-hand side's kind of, sort of, takes care of it.
Yeah.
Yes, that is, been looked into, and Mr. Barnes, Nicole, Sue Ellen, and I guess I will be meeting and laying the groundwork on what's next as far as trying to get it demolished.
Okay. Have you talked to the, the owner, the gentleman?
She is, Nicole has tried to, uh-
I saw him cutting the grass one day.
Yeah, Nicole tried to contact the actual owner, and she has no information on how to do that.
Really?
Yeah, the, the house is registered to him at that address, and she hasn't found any other information.
We, the chief had-
I can get that information.
The chief had them.
Yeah, Ms. Barnes has the information.
Okay.
I can get the information to you.
And I, I mean, I, I saw him cutting his grass out there one day.
The chief had a folder, but we were unable to access that.
I seen he comes over and-
And so, Nicole's researching the folder and the information that we had on that.
Yeah, I think that person you see is probably the house to the right that drives the Jeep. Oh, okay.
No, it's the owner.
No, it's, the two houses are owned by-
Owned by the same person.
Right.
Yeah. And I know he lives, I think he lives in Pennsylvania.
He does.
Yeah, the landlord knows him very well.
He does. We have his information, we've had it many times. There's been citations given to him. Chief Walker had a whole file on it, and we just need to recover that file.
I think the time lapse, 'cause if, if we don't keep, you know, keep up, right?
That's what Sue Ellen needed, was what those, that time was, and what the citations have been, and so that's what we're attempting to put together now with Nicole.
Yeah, 'cause he's, I mean, he's not being uncooperative.
No, he wants to sell it, he's, he's indicated-
He wants to tear it down.
Yeah, he wants to sell it.
I think he does. He's talking about, mm, I had a long discussion with him. I just wondered if we were reaching out to him also, 'cause he might, you know, need assistance or, um-
He's, uh, chief gave him lots of information.
Finding who can do it for that.
Yes, the chief gave him lots of information on potential companies that could demolish it. He's giving him, I've given him two contacts that wanna purchase the property, and he sent those to the gentleman. So, there has been a lot of correspondence, not a lot of action, but-
I'll see it again.
Lots of correspondence.
And Nicole talked to someone that's interested in property on Taylor, and gave that information to the owner of Taylor, the burnt-up house. So, they're supposedly gonna talk, but that just occurred today. So, we can hope that something will happen with that quickly.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Captain. Ms. White, do you have anything to report? I'm sorry, you came to me. Do you have any?
Um, I had a question. Um, I'm sorry, I'm just looking over the financial report. I apologize, it took me minutes to get it together. Um, but we did a repair on, on the, on, I guess, one of the admin vehicles for forty-nine hundred dollars. Did we, um, try to, well, get some bids as to why, or bring it back to the council as to why we spent that much money, or could we have gotten some bids to find out why it was so much?
I think you had a discussion about this. You chose to decide which cars to get rid of, and to have them evaluated, and so the cars were evaluated, and then that one was evaluated as the cheapest solution for retaining and keeping, and so we had it repaired.
We had a discussion to pay forty-nine hundred dollars?
We didn't have a bill amount, because you all had the discussion to repair the one that was the least cost, and that was the least costly one. The Charger was in excess of six thousand dollars to get repaired.
Well, wouldn't it have been better for us to sell that and deal stuff off, to spend almost five thousand dollars, and what year's that car, what's it, like, what?
It's got very low mileage, and it's a two thousand nine.
So, how much money have you spent on it?
Very low mileage, it's in tip-top shape now, and-
And that's according to Tracy Drive's?
Correct.
And so, we use, and we usually use Danny's auto, but we decided to use Orsman Chevrolet Abuwabasette.
They're an authorized dealer for the vehicle, and Danny's had worked on it numerous times in the past and not solved some of the problems.
Yeah, 'cause dealerships have to cost a lot, you know?
So, the, what the dealership did, Danny wasn't able to do?
You know it, you've taken it to Danny's, you said.
I mean, I took it up there, I, but-
You even suggested to go someplace else.
Yeah, but-
Numerous times.
But, but, but my question-
You were gonna take it someplace else.
But my question was, Danny's wasn't able to do what the dealership did, but yet we take our, we take the vehicles to Danny's all the time, you know?
What's your question?
If, if Danny's not able to do it, why do we still continue to take vehicles, take the vehicles to Danny's?
Well, for that type of work, you know we weren't taking it to Danny's.
I'm curious what type of work, type of work did he do?
Anytime you take, anytime you take a car to a dealership, it's gonna, it's gonna be arming the leg regardless.
Yeah, it's gonna be three times as though.
No, what, no, the work that needed to be done on that-
I mean, I don't know what work was done, I, I don't know.
Well, you know that, you know, my car needed some work.
Yeah, yeah, it definitely needed work.
Right. So, you know Danny's wasn't gonna take care of that work.
I was just asking, because it seemed like, I mean, ever since I've been here-
Now, if you mean the, the, the small things, why do we keep taking it to Danny's?
Yeah, but he's capable of doing all kinds of things, that's why, that's why I don't understand.
He worked, on that particular car, he worked on it numerous times and didn't repair it.
I mean, I don't know exactly what, what it went in for, what was done compared to it going to the dealership to have it done, see?
It had a number of-
I mean, I, I didn't know. I knew, I knew it had problems, yeah.
It was clean with it.
It definitely had problems. But the work itself, I mean, if you take it, you know, if you take it up there, and if he's not really telling you what's what, but yet it's going back and forth, then you find, then you find, decide to take it to a dealership, you know, to the car dealership, knowing they're gonna charge you arm and leg, but I wonder maybe what they did, that money could've done. I mean, I don't know. I don't know. That's why I went to the dealership.
Mr. Johnson, come on now.
Hey.
You even suggested that we take it someplace where they can put it on the diagnostic-
Yeah, I said, no, I said, y'all rely, I mean, the place relies just on Danny's when there's other places.
Right, yeah.
You know, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, but see, I, I mean, you always gotta shop around regardless, you know, so-
Well, I guess that's my question, is did we shop around to see how much, because our, our three thousand dollar rule in our charter that says anything above three thousand should be brought to the council, does that apply to everything?
Contract purchases.
All right, that's, that's my question, okay.
Why'd you ask Sue Ellen, the lawyer?
I did, that's why I was asking, she said, yes.
She said, yes, right, okay, so this-
Well, it's an expenditure. I'll pull up the charter, but I think I know what it says.
So, should it have been brought before us?
It's an ordinance, it's not a charter.
What exactly was the, what was, what was, what was the problem with the vehicle?
I can provide you the-
Please.
-copy of the invoice.
So, this ordinance set, so you're pulling it up somewhere?
Yeah, it's gonna take me a sec, though.
Three thousand dollars is supposed to come to us, but we only meet once a month, right? So, perhaps we need to think about some amendments to that, because then that means, right, that the vehicle doesn't get repaired for quite some time, waiting for us to approve
That can happen, and at times, if, especially if it's something that needs to happen quickly, and it comes up suddenly, it can just go ahead and be done, and then the council can ratify it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, like, the street lights also needed to be repaired, 'cause they were struck by lightning, and it's my perspective that I would much prefer for those lights to go ahead and get fixed, and then we, if it come, you know, if it's over three thousand dollars-
Yeah, well, that's an emergency, yes, so that would make sense.
So.
Is the car an emergency?
I don't know, I don't know.
This is something that we discussed, um, and it's not something that was hidden. We talked about the Chargers, we talked about trying to figure out which cars we were going to get rid of. We said we were going to, and as a matter of fact, we put the Charger in the shop, we put my vehicle in the shop, instead of taking it to, did we take it to Danny's too?
I know the Charger, Dan-
Because they had yard to Danny's, yeah. And then, yeah, and as a matter of fact, I'm the one that said, after we took it to Danny's, I'm the one that said, let's take it to another shop to get it assessed, to figure out what's going on with it.
What, with the Charger?
Um, with the Charger, yeah. Because we have taken it to Danny's before, and I know we've taken my car to Danny's before, so we can figure out what's really wrong, because we spend a lot of money getting a little bit fixed here, a little bit fixed there.
The Charger's problem was the front end, right?
Yeah.
Among other things.
And then it wouldn't start sometimes.
Items?
I'd just like to point out, I'm looking at our work session minutes from July sixth, twenty seventeen, and we approved a bid of almost thirty-two thousand dollars to Metro paving. I think we spent like thirty seconds on discussing that, and that was thirty-two thousand dollars. And here, we're talking about a five thousand, forty-nine hundred dollar car repair that is like point zero 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 three percent of our town budget for the year. So, I mean, I would prefer to, you know, if we want all car repairs that are not like police vehicles that are urgently needed-